All right, everyone. Can you hear me okay? People in the back? Yes. All right, great. So we're gonna get started at 2 o'clock. Just wanted to let you know. This is the Whitewater Solar Public Hearing Session of brought to you by the Public Service Commission of Wisconsin. So we're here to take public comment about the project. But just so we get oriented, before we get started, I wanted to let you know. If you do want to make a comment live today, you want to fill out this form and they're all at the table on the other, right outside. You want to fill out your name and you want to check the box that says speak now, yes. Then if you do that at the table, you'll hand it back to commission staff. They'll get me your form. They'll bring your form up to me. And once I have your form, I'll know you're on the list, so to speak, to make a comment. And when it's your turn, I'll call out your name. Have you come up to the chair? Have a seat. Where are you in? Get your name for the record and just make and make your comment. That's about as simple as you can get. Try to make it simple and easy to get people's opinion on the case. That's one way to do it. So I have to apologize right away. Hello, officer. Thanks for coming. We, I'm on Zoom and we're live streaming, so I got this device in front of me. It's. I'll be distracted a little bit. I may not be paying close attention to everyone all the time, so I apologize for that, but. Or like for now, I'm actually letting someone in from Zoom to review the case. And checking that out, but I think we're good with that, so. So yes, so we've got about two minutes to go. Take a break and fill out your form if you haven't done so yet. Right now, I only have one person signed up to make a comment. So once we get this comment, we will pretty much be done with the 2:00 PM session. Oh, we got a couple more. Okay, good. Who knows? So let me just give you a couple of ground rules while we're, oh, I got your attention. Number one is you want to speak slowly and clearly because the court reporter is transcribing what you say. And if we can't hear what you're saying or we, something that you said, then we won't be able to share that with the commissioners. Also, please no interrupting. One person speaks at a time. So I want to make sure we get everyone, give everyone a chance to comment in a respectful manner and get their comments into the commission. All comments are welcome. We don't want to intimidate anyone, make anyone feel uncomfortable just for giving their opinion. Sure, you can all agree about that. Otherwise. Another, one other ground rule we need to review is that if you're a party in the case, if you intervened, you've participated at the party hearing session, submitted testimony. That was your chance to comment and participate. So now that you're in the public session, only members of the public, not parties, can give a comment here. So that's important for you guys. If you are a party but didn't file anything for the party hearing session, you didn't file any written testimony, didn't show up at the party session, that was last week. Then you can make a comment if you withdraw your party status. So if you decide not to be a party anymore. You can, you know, I'll call your name. Have you sit up here. You can say, I don't want to be a party. I just want to make a comment. That's perfectly fine. But just so you know, you can't do both. You can't be a party and make a public comment. It's one or the other. So. Letting people in on Zoom here. And it's pretty much time to go. So I'm going to review some of this stuff again. More officially, I just want to make sure I got the people on Zoom connected. We got these are not. That was first call.
Yes.
Alright, that's my bell. So we'll just get started in a second. I want to make sure we have people connected here. Okay, we have quite a number of people on Zoom, so that's good. Alright, so you want to announce as well, we have a Spanish translator. So if anyone's more feels more comfortable speaking Spanish, we can translate your comment live. If you'd like to do that. So I know that especially in this project area, there are a number of people who are primary Spanish speakers. So we want to make that accommodation. Just let us know. We can get you, put you together with the interpreter before you make your comment. Appreciate that. Alright. So let's get, let's begin. We can start off the record, but it is 2 o'clock. So I want to welcome everyone to Whitewater Solar CP CN application. This is Doc at 20, 9828C100. My name is Michael Newmark, the administrative law judge for the PSC. So just want everyone not to be confused. The applicant here is Whitewater Solar LLC. I think some of you probably recognize the name Ranger Power. It's the owner of that entity, but the PSC, the Public Service Commission, is a state agency that is empowered to review the application of Whitewater Solar. So the commission has the power to approve, approve with modifications or deny the application. So. This is where, this is, this is who I am, who I work for and who we're dealing with. So. The commissioners run our agency, three commissioners appointed by the governor and approved by the senate. They are the people who make the decision. So it's three commissioners. They vote in open meeting about the issues in the case. And they, what majority vote wins and we move on with the decision. So once the commission meets and makes this decision, a written order is issued, it's drafted and then issued, and then it gets put on the commission's website and emailed to the parties in the case. So we've, the commissioners need to only use the record in the case to make their decisions. Only the record evidence can be used as the basis for their decision. And that's my job. I create the record. So I'd say, this document can go in the record. Commission can see it. This one, nope, can't go in, rejecting that. So that's what we did. A lot of that we did on the party session. If you guys seen the YouTube recording of that. We were evaluating the party evidence, scrutinizing it and vetting the witnesses, asking cross-examination questions. Took about, was it seven, 21 hours, I think, of hearing last week on that. So plus, all of their evidence came in in writing first. So all of that's on our, on our record system online to review. So that's part of the evidence that the commissioners will review. All the public comments as well are evidence the commission can review. So there's a little trick to the public comments. So the public comments that I received for the record are the ones that were filed after May 14th or on, on and after May 14th, when the notice of hearing issued. So all those comments will go before the commission. I'm going to review them and make sure if there's any duplicates. I'm not going to include an exact duplicate, but basically, if you filed a comment within that timeframe, the timeframe in the notice of hearing, that comment will go before the commission. So the deadline for comments is Thursday. And that's in the notice. Friday, I'm sorry, Friday, July 11th, sorry, Friday, July 11th. And that's because we're accepting comments here today and also comments in writing. So the comment period has been open since May 14th and will go on until this Friday. We have about 400, almost 500 comments on file so far. And your comments will be part of that. So your comments go before the commission in the form of the transcript of the hearing. So that's why I have our transcriptionist here. Whatever you say, we transcribe and put into the record via the transcript afternoon. So commissioners will look through the transcript. I looked at all the individual comments, all part of the record. So that's how you know, basically, that's your audience. That's the people you want to persuade is the commissioners who will read the, read the record. So there's, so different ways you can participate today. Again, like I said, you want to fill out your form, do want to speak, check the speak now box. But you don't have to speak to get your comment in. You could just write it on the form. That's one way. We have more pages for you if you want to go more pages for that. You can file your comment online or mail it to us, US mail. So there's all the details and how to do, how to do that are on this form. Grab a copy if you, if you want to refer to it for later, no problem. We also have QR codes around the room that you can just do your online comment by by getting that QR code on your phone. Goes right to the page of our website where you can file that comment. So try to make it easy. So I think we're good with the preliminary stuff. Like I said, I'll, I'll be announcing names. Have you come up to the seat here? Swear you in and give your comment. First person, however, I think it's Jerry. First person I have on the list here is Jerry Callwelter. Jerry, are you here? So now you're Jerry Callwelter, you're a party in the case, right? Isn't that correct? You filed the document direct.
That's Jared.
Your son, okay. Okay, great, great. Alright, good, good. I'm glad, I'm glad I cleared that up. Alright, so why don't we, have you come up to the seat here? Turn your mic on. Seat. So I get to see how it's done here. Our first victim, I mean witnesses, Jerry Callwelter. Make sure you can, who can hear you here. First, I'm going to swear you in, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth.
I do.
Alright, state your name and give us your comment, please.
Jerry Callwelter. My concern is for the stray voltage. I've been on the farm, part of the farm since 1969, which my son testified last week. He hasn't went through quite all the experiences I have because he hasn't been there that long. Back in the late 70s. I happened to put a pipe up against the wall. And it hit one of the wires that was under a board in the winter when the ground heaved. The electricity went through the ground because the water level and the snow was, was on the ground. And gave shocks to our neighbors. Every time they would take a drink out of their faucet. Took us a while before it showed up on our place and we found the problem. What I'm getting at is there is so much water in the ground where they're doing on the Olson Farm, where I don't know how many acres of that's going in. When they tiled that, there's 27 springs on that farm. So the water, the water table is roughly three to four feet. Very seldom that you can dig a post hole and not hit water. So the water is a great conductor of electricity. That's my big concern on the dairy farm. That's one of my concerns. The next concern is we have 200 acres on the corner of Howard Bluff. My, each side of the farm is tiled into a main that goes through the Papke's Farm, which is also going into it. I'm concerned if they hit the, the main tile line, that just is going to eliminate the drainage from my farm there. Another complaint that I would have is 20 years ago, we had to work on my irrigation system. We came in and there was a duck nest there. And we had to wait for the ducks to hatch before they could go any farther. Now they're taking 2,000 acres and they're just sort of eliminating all the wildlife at this aspect. I don't know how that works, you know, but that's all part of it is, is the wildlife aspect of it. The last aspect of it is for the last, I've probably had three hailstorms in a lifetime since I've been farming in 69. I guess that my question would be, what happens if one of these hailstorms hits all these solar panels? What happens to the soil when it's all fiberglass? Is there any way they can clean that? Is there anything they can do about that? I have, I have no idea, but I'm just, that's the question because I have went through hailstorms. So that's my comment.
Alright, great. Thank you. Alright, so Bill Salski. Billy, here.
I was, I am an intervenor.
Yes.
Here last week.
Yes, but.
For personal reasons.
Okay, sir, but you did appear like as we get the party session.
No, I did not. So I can't speak.
Okay, let's just go off the record. I.
I've had personal reasons that I was not able to.
So you did.
Attended. I was not there.
But did, didn't you join us by Zoom?
Uh, no, I did not.
You did not?
No.
Well, that's.
Yes, I did.
Yes, you did. Yeah. Okay, so, so let's get on the record. So. So Bill, yeah, because you did, you did file documents in the case and you did appear at the party session, the, all of that evidence and documents, those statements are going into the record for the commissioners. But because you're a party in the case, I can't take your statement here today.
Okay.
Alright, so thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
What if we want to hear what he was going to say?
Excuse me off the record. Ma'am. Okay, we're not, we're not really having dialogue here. That's not really what we're doing. I'm here to, I'm here to take comments so the commissioners can read them. But Mr. Salski's evidence is on file with the commission. And at the hearing, he spoke. So there is a YouTube video of that statement, but I can't take any more testimony from him. It's just not fair. Where people who are involved in the party session were able to scrutinize people's statements and ask them questions. They have the opportunity to ask questions. The public has a much easier standard for participation. We just want to get your opinion and make that statement. So that's the two options I've made available for people to talk to the commissioners about this case. But if you choose to be a party, you can't be a member of the public. It's one or the other. So anyone here who's not a party can speak their mind here, but people, our parties need to use the party process in order to make their statement. Okay? Yeah, I know it's confusing and complicated, but this is, this is a legal proceeding. The people involved have legal interests that they want to, you know, they want to protect and also promote. So I can't just make the rules up. We have to stick to the rules the way they are. Thanks. I appreciate that. Okay, so Jeff Sims, S I M E S. Sims, I knew I'd get it wrong.
I don't know if I'm a party of the party or the party of the part.
Ah, it's true. Let me see. I can tell you. I don't recognize your name, but we had about 45, so we have about 45 people intervene in this case, which is highly unusual. So let me check our list to make sure. I just don't trust my memory, so. I mean, who, who is? It's truly the list. No, I don't have you on there. So go, let's swear you in. You can go ahead. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth.
I do.
Alright, give us your name and comment.
My name's Jeff Sims and we bought a land back in 96, I believe. And it overlooked the kettle moraine. So it was beautiful. You should come out and look at it. And now they're going to put these solar panels in down below. Another thing is the irrigation or the tile runs through that whole area down there. And I don't know what's going to happen after they get done digging up, putting their solar panels in. Water's been an issue in one field down there. There is a drainage ditch. But I don't know what's going to happen with that. And then another big thing is the water contamination. Like Mr. Colwell was saying, if something happens to it, what happens with the water? Are they going to check our wells or do we have to check them and then get back to who? I don't know. Another thing is if this is federally, federal funded, what happens if the money dries up? And they always say they're going to take care of what's there. But you can't, I don't think you can bring that land back to where it was. So it's, uh. I don't know. And well, the big thing is getting in those fields. How are they going to get in those fields? Because we just had our road redone and you can't have truck traffic on it. And if it's going to wreck that road, which was just blacktopped, if they're going to clean off a power road, I'm not sure. Who pays for that or are they going to fix it? I don't know. So that's pretty much it.
What's, what's the property you're at?
N474 Old Road.
Same, okay.
Orders this land that's going to be.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Alrighty.
Alright, thanks very much. Here we go. Oh, we got a few more here and I think what we'll do. Okay, yes. Yep. Thank you. So you have a few more people. Few more people on the list here. I do have people on Zoom. I'm going to check in with them, see if they do have a comment. So I do apologize. We had a whole big plan. They have the display up. You could see people on Zoom and translate to different languages and all this stuff, but none of it's working. So you know, I don't know, we tried, we, I, everything's pretty much broken here today. So I apologize. But let me check on our Zoom participants here. I think we have, we had someone who joined us by phone. I think you're one of the people who joined us first. So I'm going to ask you to unmute by pressing star six. Your number ends in eight, seven, seven. So if you unmute, let me know if you want to make a comment in the Whitewater Solar CP CN case. Well, need to press star six. Alright, we'll move on to Roseanne Conaval. K O N E V A L. If you want to make a comment, please unmute, turn on your camera.
No comment for me. Thank you.
Alright, thanks. Michelle O'Brien. Did you want to make a comment?
No, I'm, I'm an intervener.
Yes, I recognize you now. Thanks. And we have Debbie. D E B I. Did you want to comment? Now I see you. See your cameras on. I'm going to mute you. Debbie, are you there? Not getting any words from her. Alright, we'll move on with people in the room. So Holly Newalt, N E A U L T. There. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, not about the truth. Alright, have a seat. So speaking to the mic, I think maybe people are having a little trouble hearing.
Okay. My name's Holly Nault and I live on W5689 Tammerat Trail in Whitewater. And my husband and I bought a home on the kettle moraine forest on the trail system 33 years ago. And we bought it to be close to this trail system we loved. We've logged thousands of miles, hiking, running, biking, Ice Age Trail and the surrounding roads. So that would be Ice Age Trail, Nordic Trail, John Meere and all the roads that go around the proposed project for biking. And I'm really speaking on behalf of myself and my husband, but also the community I represent is trail runners, hikers, and some of the bikers in our area are all very concerned. Most of the trail runners that come out here are from Milwaukee in the middle of the day. It was probably not going to work for them to come to this meeting. Okay. So the Ice Age Trail is not only a nationally recognized trail, it is home to several large ultra marathons. The race attracts runners and hikers from all over the United States and foreign countries. My husband and I were race directors of the Ice Age 50 for six years. And it was a it has been several times the 50 mile national championship. And it's really the second oldest ultra marathon in the country. Okay, so since the race is an out and back from the Nordic Trails on one end, all the way to Whitewater Lake. It's going to go by that whole area, the Lake Lagrange, well, Duffin Road, all the way to Whitewater Lake is really going to be impacted by inverter noise. And I really feel it's going to be detrimental to the race. And there's other races that use that same course because it's the Ice Age National Scenic Trail and everybody wants to come there for that trail system. So that is something that we're definitely concerned about because the event draws thousands of people. You might not know what happens right in your backyard, but it's people coming in that are the runners, the families, the sponsors, volunteers. There's 150 to 200 volunteers per race. And they not only come for the race weekend, but there's buildup runs leading up to the event. So every hotel in the area is booked for the race and for many of the buildup runs. So our area is going to see a large loss in tourism dollars and for people that just really have the aspiration to do that race at some point. Coming to our area and getting to know these trails. Okay, and we're a hub of road biking activity. A lot of the bikers I know say this is one of the best road biking areas in the country. And it's because you have a lot of scenic roads that wind through the kettle moraine and they're low traffic. So it's a safer way to bike in a group. So that is really chosen because of the scenic area. If it's all solar panels, I guess they're going to try to find someplace else to bike or not come out here at all. So on a related point. We also enjoy the wildlife because we're out on the trails. We live in the kettle moraine. And we're trying to wrap our heads around what's going to happen to the wildlife in our area. Uh, you got deer, fox, coyote, sandhill cranes, piliated woodpeckers. I never saw a piliated woodpecker before I moved here. Do you know what they are? They're like two feet tall. They're the original Woody the Woodpecker bird. And we have them on our property. I see them out in the kettle moraine. I hear them calling all the time. They're beautiful. And then we have eaglets, Baltimore Orioles, scarlet tanager, river otters, bald eagles. And we occasionally get to see the bobcats, badger, bear, and occasionally a mountain lion. I know there's been some spottings, but it doesn't happen very often. So we're trying to say, what is going to happen to all these animals that navigate the kettle moraine? And they're going from, you have the, the forest and then they go to the meadows, the, the farm fields to eat. You know, they're going back and forth, usually at dawn and dusk. And what is going to happen to them when everything is all fenced in? I mean, how does this work? Are they going to be a hazard to cars, to people driving in the area? Are we going to have instead of like a bike lane, we're going to have an animal lane? I don't think they would figure that out. You know, you can't teach a deer that this is where you walk now. I don't think they would figure that out. You know, you can't teach a deer that this is where you walk now. So what is gonna happen with those animal routes? And um, our area too, has beginning, been getting recognition as a migratory pattern for unusual birds. So um, we've seen even just this last spring, tundra swans on our ponds. And um, I'm sure a lot of you can attest to the, now we have egrets coming here, we have all kinds of beautiful birds. And it's because we have the Kettle Marine here. So we just really don't wanna lose all that wildlife when their patterns are interrupted. Okay, so I strongly oppose this utility scale solar power in the Kettle Marine.
Thanks for your comment.
Sure.
Hey, just call out Debbie one more time. See, I see your screen is on, but doesn't look like anyone's there. Okay. How about um, Mickey Selby? Getting that right? S E L B Y? You sit first. He's uh, right hand. I do it too. If you swear or affirm, tells you the whole truth, not the truth.
Yes.
Okay, speaking to the mic, give us your name and comment.
Okay, uh, my name is Mickey Selby. I'm a resident in Laworth County. And um, I just recently learned of this uh, situation. Did a little checking and I just have a few questions. I'd like to know if you could tell me, and one of the gentlemen that was speaking earlier had said, I'm kinda concerned about the roads, culverts, all the damage that might be done with the heavy equipment that has to come in. And actually, with the building process, and then when they leave to dismantle. Is that going to be something that taxpayers pick up, or if that's something the company is gonna be responsible for? That, and I was wondering too, about the uh the taxes, is that something that somehow the people are going to have to absorb, or is that something that the company has made some kind of deals with, or you know, is that gonna change the tax base at all for the people? Will it impact then our our home, our value? And then one other question I have for you. That seems to escape me right now. But just in general, I was just looking at some of these questions. I think that's about it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
So I can let you know, um, just generally, we have commissioned staff in the back of the room, also the applicant has representatives in the back of the room, so if you do have questions that you'd like answered, they can help you with that. And um, when you come and make your comment, you can have those answers in mind. So we wanna make, give you the opportunity to get, to get informed before you make a comment, and then you can, once you get that information, you can make your comment with that information, uh, you know, already obtained, but I'm, generally, I'm not able to answer questions on the spot here. Uh, the questions that you did mention though, um, Ms. Selby is, was, was addressed pretty significantly uh, at the party session, so there's a lot of information on file about your questions. So um, if you wanna go through that, through those documents, and you can, you can uh, review the YouTube recording to kind of uh, review some of that, uh, those topics. It's available. Hey, um. Okay, well Cheryl Wagner. You there? Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
Okay, give us your name, please. State your name.
My name is Cheryl Wagner.
So let me interrupt just a sec. So are you related to um, the Wagner who filed
Richard.
testimony, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and so it's sort of running into this problem again. So Wagners, you, you guys were allowed to be parties in the case. And that was the opportunity for, for you and your husband to participate. Um, I I don't know why we're confused about this. I was try, tried to be clear many times to discuss the difference between parties in public. When it comes to your so I, I, I mean, you're, you're the spouse of, of Richard Wagner, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, I, I mean, you guys are basically representing together on this issue when, when you intervened in the case to be a party, so I'm
I personally was not an intervenor. I've been staying behind the scenes on this, cause this has got me so upset, but okay. I haven't been able to deal with it. I'm bringing up points that have not been brought up.
So let me ask you, if you are speaking solely on your own behalf, I can let you make your comments on your personal behalf. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Alright, go ahead.
Um, so not to mention Rich at all, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. You're just gonna pretend.
Pretend I'm not married to him. Tomorrow will be forty-three years, but I'm not married to you today.
Oh boy. That's on the record too. Now we have issues. Alright, go ahead.
Um, so I will say, I have lived in the house at W two eight eight one State Road five nine in the township of Cold Spring for the last nine years. Purchasing this property across the road with acres of serenity, miles and of beautiful farmland in this community has been a lifelong dream of mine. Usually people at our age downsize, but this property sold us the moment that we laid eyes on it. Our goal was to have a safe place for our pets and enjoy the rest of our lives and retirement in this productive, thriving community. I can't mention your name. Um, anyway, there's farming in the family, and although we're not able to personally do farming ourselves, um, it's always been a passion. Three years, years ago, I was involved in a head-on collision and I had to take care of my husband, who was non-weight bearing, not mentioning his name, non-weight bearing for nine months, and he was in a wheelchair and had five surgeries. My injuries required three shoulder surgeries and in the last three years, including having my shoulder replaced. Taking care of him was unbearable enough, and any sleep that was done by me was in the chair in the living room for the past three plus years. I truly thought that the trauma was going to separate us at one point, as we have lifelong lasting effects of the accident. We'll never get back those years. But we had the ability to enjoy our home, our pets, the wildlife, serenity, along with the beautiful farmlands that surround us. Since the proposal of the solar farm prod, uh, project, excuse me, has been introduced, my stress level has gone through the roof. There has not even been one person who represents this project who ever came to my house to speak with me and inform me of anything regardless of the project's forthcoming or, or progress. Um, I would be in the dark if it wasn't for the hearings that have been held by the group that once, that's affected by this project. I find myself anxious and upset about this project, and I can only limit myself to going to a few meetings. This whole process has been shoved down our throats quickly, and I feel it keeps moving forward, giving us very little opportunity or consideration for any input that is brought to anyone's attention. I feel like any of our input falls on deaf ears. I'm overwhelmed as I feel we are basically being told that the ink is already dry. And what myself or anyone else has to say is a moot point at this stage of the game. We are being suffocated with the idea of this area being turned into an industrial park-like setting. This project will not only destroy the drain tiles, but the farmlands will never be able to be farmed again because of its project. Because if this project doesn't survive the weather that we get, we will be looking at acres of damaged scrap that will put poisons in the fields along with shards of glass that will be left for nothing but an overgrowth of weeds and debris from passing motorists that occurs when trucks haul garbage and other materials. This is land that is pristine and turning into a scrapyard is unacceptable. My concern for the animals, not only the wildlife, but personal will be severely affected. Our dog doesn't handle noise well, and months of this construction noise will be the death of him. He will never survive it. Our property is located on a very high elevation, and the sound carries a great deal from Highway fifty-nine up to our property. The construction noise from them driving posts into the ground for days and hours, and the accelerated traffic noise, which will be created from the sound bouncing off the panels, is unimaginable and unsettling. My neighbor has horses that get easily spooked by sound. How tragic it would be for these, or, excuse me, how traumatic it will be for these animals that have lived there all their lives. This affects these effects on animals will be devastating. The project would force us to into sedating our loved animals, which is not, and I repeat, not an option. This is their home as well, a place where they find comfort surroundings and have been adapted to for years. They are not just animals, they are huge comfort to us as pets and part of our family. We have a long, or, excuse me, we have a lot of wildlife that presents itself, secluding them from their natural habitat will create issues elsewhere. They too deserve the safety that is um, the land that is provided for them. There's no solution to us to block the unseen. I'm sorry, there is no solution for us to block or unsee this project. There are no trees that can be planted in front of our yard that could possibly hide or block what is being projected because of the elevation of our house sits off of our, sits on our property. We will also be forced into keeping our homes closed and not being able to open our windows for fresh air because of dust and noise coming from this project. I already feel like a prisoner in my own home. And the stress of moving forward keeps me awake at night. The solar panel project has already diminished our quality of life and the longevity of our golden years. It is a constant reminder of the loss of productive farmland, the beauty and the serenity that we longed for for the forty-three years that we've been married. I'd also like to reflect on the potential glare that these panels will cause. Any driver could be easily blinded by the glare from the panels and create an accident. I don't, I don't believe that the glare would be very minimal when the panels are in such position and in such close proximity of our homes. I have some pictures I want you to look at as I read this, if you would please. I have concerns in regards to the safety of um, Highway fifty-nine alone with this project being placed on highly traveled road. The amount of semis, dump trucks, buses, cars, motorcycles, not to mention the high amount of traffic from Somerset Marine Construction that travels this road daily would make an entry point for this construction site of this solar project an extreme hazard. There are very limited areas with passing zones. There is an incline out in front of our steep driveway on fifty-nine that creates a blind spot. Going from east to west. This is an extremely dangerous spot in a no passing zone that has had many close calls for motorists, regardless of whether you are familiar with the stretch of road or not. One cannot see oncoming traffic from the east or the west, regardless which direction you are traveling, until you are at the peak of the incline, which is directly where our driveway enters the highway. Our families, friends, and neighbors have motorcycles. And the majority of us have been riding for years with great, with a great deal of experience. Even though I'm not riding anymore as of three years ago, um, but we have motorcyclists, they know that construction areas alone will not only cause safety issues, but because of gravel and other debris, it creates safety, a safety issue, not to mention being in a congested area due to construction entrances and high volumes of traffic that travels on fifty-nine. We have so many friends that belong to organizations and bike groups as well as we do that prefer the country roads compared to the busy cities such as Madison and Milwaukee, just to mention a few. The city of Whitewater nor the Kettle Marine area should be excluded from welcoming in travelers for, from all over, whether it's for college, hiking, biking, the trails of the Kettle Marine. There are always parents coming to the college for parents' events, athletics, games, plays, concerts. The physical and mental health issues, including the lack of sleep and anxiety that this project is already creating is not something that I can just get over. So much has been taken away from us already. Not just because of the accident, but because we are now being smothered with this project. We take pride in our property and feel devalued by this project being put into motion, destroying the beautiful productive land in front of us. There are plenty of other areas that can be utilized for this project. Make use of the land that doesn't affect the other the overview, excuse me, of our country living. All in all, Whitewater already has a functional industrial park and area um, there, that's surrounding and the land is off beaten. So that's where we think the solar farm should go if they wanna progress. And we want them to dig deeper.
Alright, thanks for coming.
I thank you.
You're leaving with me the pictures?
I wanted to show, that's the concern. Because this is coming out of Palmyra. And when you pass Woodward, this is an incline. It gets, as you're driving up, it's more of an incline. You cannot see oncoming traffic. This, it, right here is a no passing zone.
Okay.
You get to the top where our driveway is. And we literally, you stop either way, or you stop when going westbound to make your turn because you have to clearly make sure that there's no traffic coming. That's the peak of the hill. And then you can finally start seeing traffic coming from the west going eastbound.
Okay.
Did you want those?
Yeah, 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 I should take them down. Thanks.
Thank you.
I'll put those in your appearance.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming. Alright, I'm gonna just check in with Zoom. I think John joined us. Can you, if you'd like to make a comment, can you unmute and turn on your camera? So off the record, so you've joined us in the Whitewater Solar Public Hearing Session uh, put on by the Public Service Commission. Ah, I see you're unmuting, yes? Can you get your camera on? John, are you there? Okay. Okay, your, your mic is on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, so, uh, can you get your camera on, any chance?
Um, I'm working on. I actually just came to, to listen. Um, I don't really have any comments at this point.
No comments. Okay, alright, no worries. Then, then you can turn your camera off. Alright, and Debbie still hasn't turned her, doesn't look like she's available. Alright, so did I also ask Rebecca Fredericks? I don't know if I mentioned you before.
You didn't, sir. I'm just observing as a member of the public.
Just observing, alright, thanks. Great, so let me call then, uh, Judy Searo. S E A R O.
C. Scarrow.
Searo.
Scarrow.
Oh, it's a C, okay. Ah, I gotcha.
S C A R O.
Correct.
Okay.
Perfect, alright. Okay, raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, not but the truth?
I do.
So speaking to the mic, give us your name and comment.
My name is Judy Scarrow. I'm from Highway twelve, um, Lagrange. Um, I am here because I violently oppose side solar panels for many reasons and have for many years. They are low density, inefficient energy that costs us taxpayers money because we're subsidizing anyone who's building them. They are intermittent. They have dangerous chemicals within them and materials. Um, materials are like fiberglass and plexi, and glass that can get into the ground. Um, chemicals are cadmium, lead, arsenic, copper, and selenium. Is a horribly poor use of land. Um, it's very inefficient, takes lots of acreage, acreage to get uh Um, it's very inefficient, takes lots of acreage, acreage to get a tiny amount of energy per. If you were to go for a different kind of energy, you would be getting far more bane for your buck per square foot. It, will it ruin the topography? I'm not sure the answer to that. It is super hard to recycle. Very often this stuff is sent to very poor areas where they are being, those people are being poisoned, including third world countries where they just dump it there and leave people to defend for themselves with the diseases that those chemicals may cause. Um, like I said, it's a poor ta- uh use of our tax dollars. They are exceedingly ugly. Many of the comments that they've already made here about the wildlife and one of the most beautiful areas of Wisconsin, the Kettle Moraine should be infested with something this ugly and detrimental to our area. Um, back to animals. I am going to go back to that. Much wildlife and more coming, which we're all very grateful for. And now it's going to be hugely disturbed by that. It's a decrease in our land values. Um, will there be runoff? Will the runoff be, even if there's not poison in the runoff, will the runoff patterns be changed in order and which therefore will detrimentally affect lands around them? Um, will they, they also come with high voltage power lines that will further ugly our areas? And the decreased tourism, which has been mentioned earlier, is one of our most vital, important um, uh sources of income and pleasure for many, many hundreds of thousands of people over the years. So I violently, violent is not a good word, vehemently oppose and I'm striking that first violently too. Vehemently oppose these and um I have to drive through Mumford and um uh there's another town Cobb, Wisconsin very often and it just breaks my heart. It's miles and miles of beautiful Wisconsin topography littered with windmills and solar panels and ruining family farms. I know some people who live there whose farms were devastated and they had to give up ship because they couldn't afford to stay in their own homes. But thank you.
Alright, thank you ma'am. Michael Pope. Then after Michael, I have one more comment, um one more appearance left to call. Um, so if you do want to speak, get your forms up. Uh, fill out your forms, give them to staff and they'll get them to me. So order to three. So after this one, uh if I don't have any more forums, we'll take a break until six P M and have another session like we've scheduled. So, Michael, do you swear you in? Do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth?
Yes.
State your name and give us your comment.
Michael P. Pope. I moved to Whitewater in uh nineteen sixty four or five, about sixty one or two years ago. My dad was a farmer. I was a farmer. I farmed almost eight thousand acres, planted it, picked it, cultivated it, sprayed it myself with the help of some brothers. But I farmed some of the very best land in the world and some very poor land in the world. And none of it should be sentenced to death holding up garbage. It, it, they're gonna, the contracts are twenty to twenty-five years with a guaranteed renewable. So it's out of production for more than a lifetime. It cannot be replaced. Let, land values are very high right now. The money offered for solar is phenomenal. But you gotta look past it because it's, it's just too easy. There should be a panel of people that say which land can go into this solar program, not the farm owner. I'm not sure if that's a proper thing to say, but a lot of these farm owners that are putting this uh very fertile land i- into solar panels, never farmed it. They, they married a person who died and that guy was a farmer his whole life and cherished the land, planted it every year. And now you got a spouse that doesn't know anything about the farming, can put it into solar panels. Some of the people that have signed up for this solar uh fairy tale are dead. And they're not gonna ever get the money that comes from the payments. My brother and I, we own quite a bit of land. It's called PH Ag. It's over a thousand acres. Anyway, I've been renting my grain facility, large grain facility, commercial size uh to S and R Egg Farm for next to thirty years. Um, when we purchased the thousand acres with another drying facility, that's uh between the two, it's about one point two million bushel. And a, and the egg farm rented it happily every year. Now, after I got them to take the facility out on County Line Road, which is five hundred and fifty or sixty thousand bushels, mine's five hundred and seventy thousand, I've had a contract for almost thirty years. I don't have a contract today because all this land up and down Bluff Road and all around Whitewater is coming out of production if this thing passes. So I don't know what I'm gonna do with the, you know, great big million and a half, two million dollar uh grain drying facility. But uh you know, you know, you have to really love the land that they go out there. I used to sleep on it when I got tired, wake up in the morning, get back in the seat, keep going. But that's this, the, the sixty, the seventy year old people that love the land. There's a, there's a huge void for that today. It's all about the dough. And uh I think it's a flash in the pan. Uh, a lot of people think it's a flash in the pan, the, the, the uh uh wind towers, uh the windmills are already obsolete. And you sign this land up for fifty years and it's over. It's just plain over with the land. You know what's gonna be polluted? It's gonna be out of production. And uh I don't think it's gonna last four or five years. Uh, friend of the family or a friend of mine, two, uh couple youngsters, uh probably in their late thirties, forties. They put seventeen hundred acres into the solar program. And now they've been told that the solar panels don't produce enough energy, so now they're putting a natural gas fired turbine peaker plant to make up for the the, the, the shortage of energy that the panels are supposed to produce. Sixty, eighty thousand gallons a day it uses. Where's that water gonna come from? You know, nearby uh uh irrigation farms that need that water, they could have it. So production's gonna be dimin- diminished. And there's more people on the earth every day, which you know, they all need food. Where's it gonna come from? So that's about all I got to say.
Alright, appreciate your comment.
Thank you.
Right, the last comment I have here, I'm gonna have some trouble reading. Um I think it's A J Tanis, T A, T A N I S, I think?
Yes, correct.
Alright, great. Oh, pretty good deciphering that. Oh, we got some more, okay.
A J?
Yes. Have a seat, I'll swear you in. Right hand, do you swear or affirm? Tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
Yes, I do.
Alright, go ahead. List your name and comment.
Okay. Yeah, A G, pardon me, A J Tanis from the area for oh, thirty, twenty-five, thirty years.
Sir, you guys, can you take the comments? Can you take your comments outside, please?
I don't think they know what you're talking about.
No, I think they do. Yeah, can you guys take the discussion outside, please? Thanks. Sorry about that. Alright, so back on the record, go ahead.
Yeah, A J Tanis from Whitewater, Wisconsin. Uh, just came as a guy kind of objectively, actually I was encouraged by my son. Um, two of them live on Bluff Road where their, their property values are gonna be affected by this particular solar.
Think adventure. If you could speak into the mic, people aren't able to hear you back. They're eager to hear your opinion, so please. There we go. That's right.
Well, coming on behalf of my sons, actually, and somewhat of our interest too, we have properties in the areas. Uh, also, uh their properties are on Bluff Road. Uh, greatly concerned about the value of properties. I think a lot of consideration is I hear some of the comments and seeing some of the uh concerns my sons have and I, um how do we continue to build, develop, purchase property in an area where property values I don't think are necessarily gonna increase? I think we're looking at a decreasing situation with a solar farm as your, um, as your viewpoint. And here, a lot of the questions brought up and looking at it even objectively, what real advantages are there to the solar farms to start with? We talk about some things as far as energy. I think there's by far better resources out there. Um, I think I was always taught as a detective too to chase what, first of all, the money. You follow that and follow that route and I think here really more what's happening. It, it's a financial one. I think it's a huge financial gain for the folks that are installing these types of, um, what call them farms. It's like I say, it's kind of a poor term of that. We're putting in these uh solar panels, windmills. I mean, years ago, a windmill was very, very functional on the farm. It pumped water. But it really didn't affect a whole lot else other than you on that farm. Here you're affecting a whole neighborhood. You're affecting your neighbors and everybody else. Uh, scenery, wildlife. I don't think a great deal was done here on this particular properties. Looking at the natural resources that are there uh nature wise, there's been comment about some of the things that folks see. You, you know, water tables are very high there in those areas. There's a lot of things that are not, I don't think, fully been taken into consideration, if, if it was really looked at and dealt in too deeply to find out why we should or should not. But solar panels here. I think it's hit pretty much the surface. It's a lot of profit, a lot of gain as far as properties for these folks installing them. I get that. Um, I look at it as a business standpoint too and it makes a lot of sense to them. I get that. But I don't think they took into consideration the neighbors. They didn't take consideration their community. And that's, that's sad that we look at a dollar before we look at our community. And our community is gonna take us in the long run further than the dollar is. That's just a very monumental simple gain of the moment. I think that we're missing some of the points there. So I think objectively, yeah, we stand against. Uh, but the motivating factor here, I think, has been uh really overlooked. I think we look at it, need to look at this community, look at these folks. Look at the people and try to continue to build that versus looking at a profit of a business and gain. And I think that's what's being asked. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for coming. Alright, I have Andy Archer next.
Asher.
Okay, back to the drawing board here. Asher, okay, gotcha. That's alright, we, we'll get it right. Sorry, in, raise right hand. Swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, the truth.
Yes, sir.
State your name and your comment, please. And speaking to the mic.
Andy Asher, N six five four Howard Road. Um, not adjacent to this panel project, but definitely in line of sight. So I purchased the farm twelve years ago to raise crops, livestock and kids. Got several concerns about this project. The city of Whitewater encompasses roughly eighteen hundred acres and has taken two hundred plus or minus years to grow this large. The solar panel project is planned to be twenty-five hundred acres or so fenced in acres and planned completion is two years. Have I really thought of the majesty of that, how quickly the destruction of that panel happened? This proposed project land has gone twelve thousand years without development and will essentially be ruined and stripped from any natural habitat that it has created in only two years. The project states it is planned to plant native grasses and pollinator habit- habitat. And that's fantastic, but leaves no room for actual wildlife habitat. It'll take fifteen years before those plants grow decently after the compaction created from the construction. There's likely nothing will grow under the panels themselves after a year or two with the removal of topsoil moisture just from the panels diverting the direct rainfall. It'll take earthworms hundred plus years to reverse the compaction after this project's lifespan. Returning the land to its natural state after the thirty year lifespan is impossible and should not be lied about. The removal of this project after its lifespan will be just as, if not more destructive to the land that has been trying to heal itself for the thirty years it was under panel. Um, the fencing around this project is absurd. It's financially ridiculous for the, it's not a six hundred forty acre section in Iowa. It's not square. It's clear north of fifty-nine, all the way to south at twelve. It's, it's ridiculous. Um, our water table is fifteen feet below grade. Hmm, this would be my biggest concern. Um, most productive farm fields in our area have drainage tile and thirty foot spacings. Without the drain tile, much of this land would be wet and it was. Uh, two concerns. First would be drinking water poisoning. Uh, many of our, our towns residents drinking water wells pull from an aquifer twenty to forty foot. With the pylons, Whitewater solar uses uh that hold these panel up, will they be made of food grade stainless? They really shouldn't be. I know that's a ridiculous expense, but if they're actually concerned about us, that's something they should be doing. Water follows the path of least resistance and running off these panels and running onto the highly compacted ground created from the construction will enter the ground via channels along the pylons. The second water concern is what happens with the drain tiles. We've talked about this already. You've kind of beat that one in. But if those, if the drain tiles are cut, I think we've, we sit at like eight hundred, eight hundred feet elevation or I think I'm at like eight thirty or eight twenty and eight hundred feet is swamp. So twenty feet, if the water table rises much at all, we're gonna have basements flooding. I don't know, this one's a little wild, but solar panels are much like asphalt and they create a heat trap. If you look at historical data of storm tracking, most of our potential summer rainfall moves from west to east. As the storms move east and meet Lake Koshkana, oftentimes they split. So we kind of sit already in this proposed area as kind of a drought stricken zone, which this year it's, it's not, but it's typically it is the last several it has been. I believe the nine hundred eighty-eight acres of panels will create a temperature increase on our hottest times of the year and amplify that storm splitting effectively, Koshkana. The community impact, Whitewater Solar has absolutely no local ties to our community. They'll use very little local labor for two years of construction and only create a handful of jobs for its lifespan. I think, what'd they say, five? It's nothing. Uh, who's responsible for the destruction of our township roads? We've talked about that. I don't think there's a clear answer to that. I know that there's some tax, they're, they're gonna pay the township. I don't remember what the dollar amount was, but it doesn't seem like it's near enough. And I, a couple other things here. So as I kind of look across the, the people that are here today, um I see a lot of, lot of really aging, older community members and I, not sorry. So I, I'm
We're, we're all aged.
Yeah, yeah, we are, yeah. I see myself in the mirror, I see it too. Uh, I see a lot of faces that this is, if this goes through and your property is overlooking it, that's what you're gonna look at for the rest of your life. And that, that makes me sick. Like I bought a farm, I'm probably one of the younger landowners in our community. You know, to, just for the fact that I work hard to provide for my family and bought a place that I thought would be safe from not necessarily urban sprawl, because communities grow, we are gaining people every day, but I, I feel terrible for the people that have to see this for their entirety, for the rest of their life. Like I will likely see God willing, the, the rise and fall of this project. I will never see that farmland back. That is, that's a fallacy that will not have. The city of Whitewater in itself has a few hundred acres and their industrial park of farmland. Um, I've seen them through a, through their board, whatever, the, the city make foolish decisions, tax dollar decisions forever. But the city of Whitewater is actually smart enough to not put a single one of their acres of farmland under panel. Why, why, why are we not doing this, it's crazy? Lastly, this is not at all about green energy, cropland is green energy, solar panels are not. Thank you.
Great, thanks for coming. Okay, uh, any more appearance slips? Any more slips in the back, no, anyone else wish to speak that hasn't had a chance? No, and checking Zoom, I have no new people in attendance, although Debbie never showed herself to us, she just, I just see her, the ceiling of her living room and. And her microphone phone is off, so I don't think she's gonna be making a comment now. Um, we will be reconvening at six P M to hear new comments from new people, uh, both here and on Zoom, so look forward to that and, uh. Feel free to join us, uh, back again, but I, we won't, we won't, won't have repeated comments, we'll just take new people, um. Otherwise, if you, uh, were here but did not want to speak. Or if you're, uh, missed the hearing for any reason, uh, we still have until Friday to file a written comment. Like I mentioned, the details on how to do that are on the notice of hearing, and also on these appearance slips, there's. About a hundred or so more left, uh, over on the table outside, so if you do want to take a few to pass around. Feel free, uh, there, the link to the online comment form is on here as well as the address to mail in a comment. And I didn't wanna, I did want to mention, I checked our system, I have two hundred and thirty-one comments filed. Since the notice of hearing was issued, so those are the comments that I'll review for entry into the record, so, um. All of those and then up until the, the deadline on Friday. So with that, that's all we have for now, um, we'll take a break and we'll be back at six, we'll stand adjourned until then.